I'd like to call the March 12, 2012 Board of Education meeting to order. First, let's start the meeting with a moment of silence and please keep in mind all the men and women serving our country, keeping us safe and free so that we can participate in meetings like this. Now would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, tonight our school spotlight is on Dr. W.T. Griggs Elementary School.
Dr. Dobney, members of the board, and Ms. Schuler, I am proud to present some of our teachers and our students from Griggs Elementary School. We're all about a lot of things and one of those things is learning to be healthy and responsible students. And with us today, we have Ms. Cotton and Ms. Pyle, her teacher assistant, who've been working with the class and it's spread through other parts of our building too, but learning about nutrition and making good choices in what we eat.
Hi, Teresa Pyle. As a Culinary Institute of America graduate, working as a teaching assistant and being committed to helping kids eat healthier, I felt it important to give instruction on how we eat affects us. In addition to the curriculum for first grade, Mrs. Cotton and I found the time to introduce the food pyramid and explore it. With offer versus serve being implemented in the elementary school level and the presidential campaign for a colorful plate in the news, we felt it was the perfect opportunity for discussion. The largest colored stripe in the pyramid represents fruits and vegetables, which often are foods that children do not pick but should choose the most of to eat, like the rest of us. We talked about the fact that if people chose foods that are high in fat and sugar, we won't have room for the good stuff. The children noticed that chocolate wasn't on the pyramid. And this took us to a conversation on chocolate milk and the extra sugar that is in it, which started the "We Don't Pour It On" campaign in our class in November. Before this discussion, only two students chose pure milk with their lunch, which is true of most of the lunch tables. We use a chart to track the teaspoons of sugar we are not eating by choosing pure milk over the flavored varieties offered. One child has chosen to count the number of those with water or whole milk, and I place a sticker by their names on the chart. Did you take the chart, Jeremiah? The line leader of the day then counts those stickers by twos and counts out that number of cubes which are then placed in the case by the auditorium for the school to see. The cubes are put together just like sugar cubes in a box to show the pounds of sugar we don't eat as a class. We have been studying patterns and they can make patterns too with their cubes. The pounds add up quickly. Today, we did not add our cubes up, so Jeremiah is going to count today's... Want to turn around, Jeremiah? And while I keep talking, he's going to count out today's cubes. When we reach the first five pounds of sugar that we hadn't eaten, we played a fun game at recess, using teens' blindfolds and a crazy flying baseball with a flag on it, and we had a lot of laughs. In our classroom, we incorporate energizers and brain gym activities to keep active while at work. We are eating right and moving more as a class. Some of the students decided to enter the Nutrition Wise Essay Contest, and tonight, we are here to read a couple of them to you. Eternity, would you come read your essay? Just pick it up. All right.
We learned to drink more white milk because it has more sugar in the chocolate. I drink white milk every day because it is healthier for you. The chocolate has more sugar and the white milk has less. I hope that everybody drinks white milk too, now you know why.
Thank you, Eternity, great job.
You have to eat healthy. You need to drink white milk. You need to have fruits and vegetables like peas and corn. You need lots of vitamins like oranges. You also need lots of nutrients and eight glasses of water a day and lots of fiber also. You need to exercise. Too much sugar is definitely not good for you. I do not drink chocolate milk. Processed orange juice is not as good for you when it's cooked. Orange juice that is not processed is good for you. Fiber and vitamins... Because you get lots of fiber and vitamins. Some popsicles are healthy for you. Don't eat cake every day. And eat healthy things like strawberries. What would you eat? What would you eat?
Thank you, Erin. The unique power of a student-led campaign is that there's no waiting for the grown-ups to catch up to what's going on. I have been invited to two other classrooms to explain what we are doing in the display case with all the stickers and the cubes. Students are encouraging one another to take control of one aspect of their nutrition by choosing pure milk and to make sweetened flavored milk a treat, not an everyday staple at breakfast or lunch. Now, we have not eaten 13 pounds and how many teaspoons?
Thirty.
Thirty teaspoons. Thank you. Of course, we're adhering to the nutrition guidelines and we're not mandating this in the classroom, but it's a good life lesson for the children to see, you know, how much sugar they are not drinking by choosing to drink white milk. And some kids, quite frankly, found that they had not been drinking white milk because they just thought they didn't like it and then they tried it again and thought, "Well, I really do like this." So they're not being forced to drink white milk, so I wanted to assure you of that. We're just trying to teach them healthy, good choices, but thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Could you put the microphone back down on the table and have the students come up and introduce themselves? First name and last name.
Erin Kirby.
Eternity Chappell.
Good reading and good counting on your part.
Yes, I'm sure whoever's judging the essay contest is probably having a really big challenge across the county to judge those.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Cotton, Ms. Pyle. It's tough to know that we're not allowed to eat cake every day though. Okay, next we'll have our public comments section. First on the agenda is Kiba Baldwin.
Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Schuler, I stand before you this evening to deliver another proclamation. This is for the North Carolina School Social Worker. By the Governor of the State of North Carolina, a proclamation, whereas the North Carolina Constitution recognizes the right of every citizen to obtain a sound, basic education, and whereas there are some students with special needs and concerns which require assistance and encouragement, the maximum development of student potential, and whereas school social workers serve as the liaison between the home, school, and community, and whereas among their many duties, school social workers encourage parents to take an active role in the education of their children, and whereas school social workers often interpret and assess to identify needs of exceptional children and to assist with children in primary and secondary grades, and whereas school social workers also work closely with local and state agencies in meeting the needs of children and their families, and whereas the state of North Carolina has launched the Child and Family Support Teams, which has placed a school social worker and a school nurse team in 100 elementary, middle, and high schools across the state to connect children and families in needed health, mental health, and other social services to support the success in all schools. So now therefore, the Governor, Beverly Perdue, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 4th through March 10th, 2012, as School Social Worker Week in North Carolina and urge our citizens to recognize an outstanding contributions made to the education of our youth by school social workers. Currently, we have two social workers in our county that serve all of our schools, housed at Kurutuck County High School and Kurutuck Middle and Moyac Middle. These two ladies do an outstanding job servicing the schools, the students, and our community. We hope and we wish that we continue to support their needs and their efforts, that they can continue to support the students in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do really appreciate our school's social workers. Next, Diane Newbern.
Do you want us to set it down on the table?
vertically challenged, but that's okay. Dr. Dobney, members of the Board of Education, and Ms. Schuler, it's my pleasure to come to you this evening to share with you about a recent event that Kurutuck County High School was privileged to host. On Saturday, March 3rd, the Fine Arts Professional Learning Community of Kurutuck County Schools hosted the Third Annual Spring Into the Arts Festival. This event was the result of the collaboration of the visual and performing arts teachers from the district. The event included displays that highlighted student artwork featuring a variety of media, including photography, pencil sketches, mixed media, collages, and other types, as well as performances, performances by grade-level elementary students, middle and high school chorus and band performances, and a preview of the opening number by the cast of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. All of these were excellent. Many workshops and craft stations were manned by the art teachers as well as student volunteers. The event was well-attended and afforded participants the opportunity to see firsthand the many talents of Kurutuck County Schools' students and to explore their own artistic abilities. The arts have a positive effect on student learning and achievement across all curricular areas. We are fortunate to have a fine, strong, talented, fine arts program, and I hope that Kurutuck County Schools will continue to fund the arts and explore options for expanding our offerings from kindergarten through 12th grade. I would like to publicly acknowledge the hard work of the following teachers, without whom this event would not have been possible. The elementary visual art teachers, Virginia Schwallen, Heather Garner, Tammy Kite; elementary music, Doug Shoemaker and Nancy Lurff; middle school visual arts, Lisa Doxy; middle school band, Lyndale and Nicole Lee; middle school chorus, Carrie Chapel; high school theater, Buddy White; high school band, Lindsay Eskins; high school chorus, Tiffany Arbogast; high school visual arts, Claire Vinick and Anita Rubino. They did an outstanding job in coordinating the event. It was fantastic. The cast of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat did a preview of the opening number. It was amazing. And so I encourage each of you and members of the public to mark your calendars, because this production, directed by Buddy White and boasting a cast of students from all levels from Kurutuck County Schools, will perform March 30th and 31st at 7:00 p.m. and April 1st at 3:00 p.m. in Kurutuck County Middle Schools Auditorium. Also, I'm pleased to announce that Timmy Cremmons, a student at Kurutuck County High School, auditioned and was selected to attend the North Carolina School of the Arts for next school year. The arts are alive and well in Kurutuck County Schools, and I thank you for your support of the programs.
Ms. Schuler, could you get the list of names from Ms. Newbern and send each one of those people to thank you on behalf of the board for providing our community with, you know, such a great event?
Glad to.
Okay, next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Do we approve it?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? First item on the agenda is approval of field trip request. Ms. Schuler?
Yes, you have already approved the first three, I believe, on that list. The FBLA trips to the state competition in Greensboro between Kurutuck County Middle School is up for approval. Also, Moyac Middle School will be on that trip, and JP Napp Early College. And right now, the two middle schools are going to be traveling together, and we're looking into the Early College as well, traveling together.
Okay. We also have a overnight field trip request that we approved a few months back, and that's for the cheerleaders to attend the national competition.
Right, sorry, missed that one.
That's okay.
Sorry, Chelsea.
I'm sure Chelsea was going to mention that. Do I have a motion that we approve all the overnight field trip requests?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, Student School Board Member Report. Chelsea, you want to tell us about the competition now?
Our competition cheerleading squad will be traveling to Myrtle Beach this weekend for a two-day national competition sponsored by Cheer Limited. It's very big and we're all very excited. Two more of our athletes signed with colleges for their respective sports, Taylor Davis with Meredith College for Soccer and Dustin Midget with North Carolina Wesleyan for Football. Cap and gown pictures for seniors will be taken on March 28th. You can sign up for a sitting time in the front office, which that started today, and there will also be a sitting fee of $20. Yearbooks are on sale for the high school for $65. You can buy them in the cafeteria or find the information online. Our military ball for ROTC cadets is also coming up. Tickets are on sale. They're $15 for singles while they're $25 for couples. Also, registration for the upcoming year will begin with rising sophomores, juniors, and seniors signing up for classes. Times and locations for your specific registration can be found in the lobby.
Thank you, and good luck this weekend.
Thank you.
Next, Jonathan?
At the high school, the Future Farmers Association had a couple of events this past month. At the Tools CDE and the Creed CDE, Brittany Daniel won first place at the Albemarle Federation Event. The Tools team placed third, and that includes Emily Baymont, Mac Duncan, Amanda Gurney, and Kelly Wilson. This Saturday at 6 o'clock, there's going to be a baseball alumni dinner and social, and it's going to be at CCHS. It's a buffet, $10 per person, and there are prizes involved. I just want to reiterate what Ms. Newbern said about the art extravaganza. There are many talented artists in our schools throughout the county, as we know, and the spring break for all Kurutuck County students will be the week of April 9th, and I'm already counting down.
Can't wait.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, next, Resolution on Eliminating Discretionary Reversions. Ms. Schuler?
Yes, we've been encouraged by the North Carolina School Board Association to pass a resolution discouraging discretionary reversions that have been in effect for four years, and so I'm just going to read this resolution and ask the board to approve. Whereas discretionary reversion has been in effect for four years, which camouflages the actual amount received by school districts, and whereas the Kurutuck County School system had to revert $1,167,981 to the state of North Carolina in 2011, and whereas the Kurutuck County School system had to use $510,034 from education job funds in its 2011-2012 budget, and whereas the Kurutuck County Board of Education and Superintendent have had to make extreme cuts in both personnel levels and essential program services due to the extensive budget cuts since 2008. Now therefore, be it resolved that, the Kurutuck County Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools respectfully request that the legislature of the state of North Carolina eliminate the discretionary reversion for the betterment of public education for all school systems in North Carolina. The elimination of the reversion would allow us to offset the loss of the education jobs funds at the end of the fiscal year and would put an end to discretionary reversions in North Carolina.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do we accept the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Okay, Mr. McClellan, discretionary reversions. Do you want to come up here and just put that in layman's terms and how much money we're going to have to give the state back?
What the state has done is they fully fund us, and they say they've done it to give us flexibility. They give us the money and then they tell us to tell them where they want to take it back. This year was 1.1 million. Next year is going to be 1.3 million.
Thank you.
We don't have any say-so over that, do we? They just say they're going to take the money back, right?
Yeah, we have to give them money back to them. We get to decide where we take it from, and we have to do that... We have to give back that large of amount of money and make a statement that it's not going to impact classrooms.
You know, that's just to keep the state from saying, "We're going to cut your budget this much more," so they just throw it back on the local district and say, "You need to cut a million dollars out of your budget." Okay, I have a motion in a second that we adopt the Resolution on Eliminating Discretionary Reversions. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Joint Request for Lottery Funds. Mr. McClellan?
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, members of the board, Ms. Schuler. I come before the board tonight to bring in three lottery applications. The first, and all three of these lottery applications are for capital projects for next year's budget, the 12-13 budget. The first one is a replacement chiller at Central Elementary for $150,000. The second application is for replacement cafeteria roofs, the first one at JP Napp Early College, and the second one at Moyac Elementary, and that's for $126,000. And the third one is for three HVAC units, two at Kurutuck Middle and one at Griggs Elementary, and that lottery application's for $146,000. These three applications total $422,000. Are there any questions?
These are funds that have already been given to the district, and we have to spend them on capital outlay, and we cannot spend it on current expense, which would be for personnel and people like that.
Correct. They made a one-time exclusion last year, but the money needs to be spent on either new capital construction or capital improvements.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do we accept the joint request for lottery funds?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Reassignment of Capital Outlay Funds.
I come before the board tonight asking the board for approval to reassign capital outlay funds, where the first one is the technology department. We put a number of funds over the last three years to equip all of our classrooms with smart boards. Mr. O'Brien and his staff were able to get the smart boards put into the secondary schools substantially under cost, and so we would like to reassign the $153,000 left over to go back towards the bulk computer purchase. And what we've had to do, as we were equipping all of our classrooms, we had to... We only had so much money, so what we had to do is we were cutting the funding to our replacement computer cycle as far as for all of our equipment, and so we would like to try to get the technology department back up on track, and so we would like to reassign the $153,000, and that would make... It would relieve a big dent that we have right now as far as the replacement cycle.
Then, don't we have a chiller at Moyac Elementary?
Oh, I'm sorry. And then the second one is we would like to reassign $26,000 from the replacement chiller at Moyac Elementary. This bid came in substantially under our projected cost, and we would like to reassign that to a rooftop HVAC unit at Kurutuck County Middle School that will be done this year, because the project at Moyac came in $76,000 under budget, but the one at Kurutuck County Middle School cost us $26,000 more than we thought, so we would like to reassign the money so we can complete both projects.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we reassign the capital outlay funds?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Brien, could you come up before I call for the vote? Just in your estimation, how long will it take us to get back on track with replacement of computers?
What we've laid out is a plan to get to a six-year replacement cycle for desktops and a four- or five-year replacement cycle for laptops, and if we can maintain the level of funding that this transition... This transfer will provide us and the initial, I would say in about, between three and four years, we'll be back on track. What we've done over the past several years is, instead of using that money in a replacement cycle, we've expanded the number of computers.
Right.
Over the past seven years, we probably have twice as many computers now as we did. So now we're trying to refocus and get that replacement cycle going.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion in a second that we reassign the capital outlay funds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, Budget Transfers and Amendments.
I come before the board tonight asking for the board's approval on budget increases in our state, local, federal, and capital outlay budgets. Our state allotment, we've received an additional $196,436, with the bulk of this coming in transportation funding. We received about another $200,000 in additional transportation funding because of our improvements in efficiency over the last 18 months, and then we received an additional $30,000 because the cost of fuel has gone up. But we did have one reduction in that the North Carolina Virtual Public, the VPS classes, the online classes, we have very high usage, so the state actually took an additional $37,000 back for that, and that's where it nets out to the $196,000 increase. In local funds, we're asking for an increase of $16,356. This is an increase in some of our reimbursable federal and state programs that we pay for and we get reimbursed by federal and state funds. In our federal budget, we got some increased funding in four of our programs in the tune of $64,493.86, and on capital outlay, we have an increase of $96,425, and that's the third-year payment that the state makes for our replacement buses. For five buses, they gave us three years ago. Are there any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Do we approve the budget transfers and amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next, Approval of Technology Plan. Paul O'Brien, Chief Information Officer.
Good evening. We're required to submit a technology plan for the next two years. This will go to the state, and the state Board of Education will be asked to approve it. And we took our... We solicited information from our Media and Technology Advisory Committee at the district level, and then went beyond that, and I actually scheduled with the principals to go to each school and talk to their school improvement team, their entire faculty, whatever group they wanted to bring together, so that I could gather input for this technology plan, so it would be the most meaningful for our district. And we guided our discussion around four questions. The first was, what is currently working well? The second, what are our current challenges? Third, what should our focus be in the technology plan? Third, what should our focus be in the technology plan? And fourth, what is your ideal future state, or what's our vision for technology? The responses across the district were remarkably consistent. The things that they said were working well were, one, the smart boards that you've provided the money for, and we've been able to get into their classrooms and they're using. They also spoke very highly of my staff, and particularly our help desk that we provide, and so I'd like to take just a second to recognize my staff for the incredible work they do. First, there's Thelma Crookshanks, who's our AS400 expert, and also provides a lot of support at the central office level. Charles Pachel, our network engineer, who keeps all the wide-area network up and running. Patty Castle, who's on our help desk. And then our technicians in the field, Lindy Moser, Andy Broome, and Stacy Smithson. And it's not just me saying thank you for that. That's what the folks in the schools told me, too. They said they were doing a great job, and they appreciated that. When we talked about what the challenges were, they spoke to three or four main issues. One was aging hardware in the classrooms that now is getting slower and such. So with your approval of that transfer, that's going to help us jump-start and get some of that older equipment out and replaced with new equipment, so that'll go to address that one. The second major issue they had was old software. We've been running Windows XP on our machines, and it served us very well, but now we need to update. We're in the process of signing a software agreement with Microsoft that'll allow us to update every machine in the district that'll handle it to Windows 7, and update Office to 2010, whatever the current version is. That was a, that was a major issue for those teachers, where they had different versions on different machines. They also mentioned staff development was a challenge. As you know, we lost our countywide technology facilitator. She's now a media specialist, and they're recognizing the sacrifice that that is in the building, so we're looking at some things to address that. We're providing an online technology academy and going to try to provide some opportunities in the summer. So those were kind of the main issues, and we have to address those around five main priorities in the state plan. The first is a shared services model, and what the state is doing is trying to find ways that they can consolidate services across the state and save all of us money. The first one that we're going to be looking at is their internet filtering and firewall solution. They can provide, in the cloud, a solution that would allow us to save, if we go with it, $60,000 over the next five years on our filtering solution. So we're real optimistic that that's going to help. The second that we're going to look at is a virtualized AS400, so we no longer have to provide that computer and those services. So we will evaluate the things as they come online, the things that make sense for us logistically, and from a cost perspective, we'll take part in. Second priority is universal access to personal computing devices, and this is something that, again, at every building, the teachers mention to me. We need to, at some point, get to where we have more access to devices for our students. In some cases, that may be one-to-one, and if it's a one-to-one, one device to one student, then it could be laptops, it could be iPads, it could be other tablets, it could be all kinds of different things. So one of the things that we've written in the plan, and that we've requested in next year's capital outlay budget, is to begin to do some pilots. Let's maybe take a set of Chromebooks, for example, take them into a school, use them in a one-to-one environment, and see how it works, see how we can manage it, because we, not only do we have to provide a device that meets the instructional goals, but we also have to be able to support it. And then maybe we take a set of iPads to another school, maybe laptops and so forth, so we get some real-world data on what's going to work for us at the different levels, because it wouldn't necessarily be the same device at every level. Third priority, access to digital teaching and learning resources, including digital textbooks. It's my belief that the first place we'll see this come to fruition is going to be in the Common Core areas of language, arts, and math, because now you've got so many states on those same standards, and we're going to see, and we're already beginning to see, digital textbooks produced in those areas. So if we've increased our access to computing devices, and now we can get free or low-cost Common Core textbooks, that goes a long way. Last ones are on technology-enabled professional development and 21st century leadership. We'll be working more closely with Ms. Kinsel and her teams as they work to refine the pacing guides and the curriculum documents, so that we can integrate more technology resources in those, so that it's easier for the teachers to access. Those are the highlights. You've got the full plan in front of you, but be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions right now? Okay, do I have a motion that we approve? The technology plan is presented?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion, have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Paul, please tell all your staff that the board thanks all their hard work and effort, and we appreciate all your hard work and effort in keeping us up to date and online.
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, adoption of the 2012-2013 school calendar. Ms. Scholler?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Kinsel, please. She's been working on that calendar.
Dr. Dominy, members of the board. Ms. Scholler, thank you for the opportunity. As we mentioned and discussed during the earlier work session, we have been presenting with, to our staff, draft calendars for the 2012-2013 school year. Ms. Scholler has met with her advisory group, and they've given some feedback. In addition, we've asked all of the principals to, again, share an updated version, which was option two on your eBoard agenda. And on that particular option, we incorporated some of the initial feedback from the staff. As per our discussion this afternoon, in an effort to try to streamline and make our two calendars, one for JP Napp Early College and the one for the rest of the district, more compatible and more aligned, we've incorporated a few different changes with the beginning of school on the district calendar, as well as when Christmas break falls. And so I believe you each have a hard copy. Yes? Okay. And just for, we will have this posted on our website once it's been adopted, but for your sake and the public's sake, the significant changes between option two, which was recently put out, and the one we've created based on your feedback tonight. The August 17th workday will be removed. We've moved it to the election day. November 6th, because it is a presidential election day, we feel it's best to not have students in school that day, because our schools are being used as polling sites. Workdays, if, as if, this will not be one of the mandatory workdays, so that would be an optional workday for staff, so they could choose to be there or not, but that still cuts down considerably on the traffic and the parking. We've shifted Christmas break to align with the early college schedule, removing December 20th and 21st, and moving it to January 2nd and 3rd. And of course, then we had January 4th, which was kind of hanging out there, and that's where we've moved the previous leave day that was on the election day to January 4th, so it completes that week without having to worry about staff having to come back in to supervise for a workday. So again, both of the calendars that you're seeing before you this evening have designated mandatory workdays included in them, or they're just designated on the calendar. We have not yet received a waiver for the 185 days, five of those days, we've asked for a waiver, as we did this year. If the state board approves our waiver, then those days that are designated on both calendars as mandatory workdays will be used for professional development, some of which will be aligned with Mr. O'Brien's technology plan. If our waiver is not approved, those will become student days, and we will make the appropriate change on what's posted on our website, but we'd like to go ahead and designate those, so people can plan for them. If you have any questions, based on what we've gone over and put in front of you this evening before we ask for your approval, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Anyone?
No.
Because we discussed this during the work session pretty thoroughly. Okay, do I have a motion? We adopt the 2012-2013 school calendar?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, consent agenda. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, information item. Items, plural. Okay, our next work session has been rescheduled. It was originally going to be April 9th, but now it's going to be rescheduled to April 18th, so that it doesn't conflict with the school leave, and it will start at 2:00 at the Napp Professional Learning Center. Also, our next board meeting will be rescheduled to April 18th, 2012, 7:00, right here. Okay, and last on the agenda, board member comments. Let's start with Ms. Ennis.
Okay. I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed Read Across America Day. I think it was March 2nd. I read at three elementary schools, and I had a great time. It was amazing to me that the youngest kids wanted to hear the most stories. I made the mistake of carrying five books into a first-grade classroom, and I read every single one of them. So I just want to thank the teachers and staff and everyone who put that together, because it was really a lot of fun.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
Just, again, thank everybody for all the hard work they're doing, and particularly in our technology, we're trying to keep up with what's happening out there in the world, and the only way we can do it is keep buying new computers and whatever we need to support them. So just thank everybody for doing all the hard work.
Ms. Suthrige?
Just wanted to bring it to the seniors' attention that the Creighton Dare Community Foundation is offering high school seniors the opportunity to apply for college scholarships, to make sure that they're all aware of that. So check, check your scholarship board and apply to as many, for as many scholarships as you can, because they are out there.
Okay, Mr. Simmons?
I just want to take a second to thank Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Kinsel, the people on our staff that have been working super hard to come up with budget items and upgrading our stuff and getting our calendar done. It's a lot more work than people understand. Last but not least, I had a chance to go to a baseball game the other night at the high school, the bottom of the ninth, then, excuse me, the bottom of the seventh, the family plays seven A's. Creighton, got a man on third base, squeezed him in, we won the game. If you get a chance to go see a baseball game, soccer match, tennis match, softball, there's something going on at the middle schools. Golf. There's something going on just about every night. If you see the lights on, pull in there and stop, you'll see some good, good sports going on.
And I'd really wish we could find out exactly how much money that both Willis Simmons and Kiba Baldwin have saved our school district this year, but it's a substantial amount, especially in this day and time of, you know, really tight budgets and that. But I would like to thank them for their hard work and effort, and once again, you know, go along with Jackie. I know Paul saved us some money, Paul O'Brien in technology, and Kelly for managing the budget well. And once again, I'd like to thank all of you, and good luck to the cheerleaders this weekend. And do I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you on the 18th.